Good afternoon, this is the Town of Parsonsville Planning Board Meeting. A workshop that's scheduled for Wednesday, March the 2nd at 6:00 PM. We're calling the meeting to order at this time since we have a quorum. And we'll be discussing the things that are on our agenda and following through on some items only on the agenda for this workshop. In order to start moving, what we're looking at is the Land Use Ordinance Document itself. Land Use and Development Ordinance that was adopted September the 8th, 2018. This board has found some flaws in the current Land Use and Development Ordinance. And we need to start making some changes to it and updating it and bring it in line with the State Department of Environmental Protection, Chapter 1000. And that's what we're going to try to do. I do have a full copy of the Chapter 1000. It's quite lengthy and it's got a lot more information in it than that we may be able to use and to enhance our Land Use and Development Ordinance. When we put this package together for the review of the ordinance itself, we broke it down between the five board members by certain pages for each board member to go through and bring forward some recommendations. And for discussion on Land Use Ordinance Review, first up was Aaron.
Yeah, so I had pages 7 to 20, which was for the most part Article 1, all of the, in the start of Article 2.
Right.
But it was mostly the definitions.
Right.
From a content standpoint, there's not a lot to edit for us. Went through and highlighted some sections that call out the shore land that we want to pull out.
Right.
Saw a ton of formatting issues, places that need spaces, things that are underlined that shouldn't be and things that, or things that aren't underlined that should be. A lot of the headers and things like that, just a lot of formatting issues that I called out. Go through to see if there's anything else. See, I have some font, some font size changes or some font changing.
Right.
Font 1, on page 12, there's, Section 8 is duplicated. So it either needs to be combined or made Section 8, 9, and so forth.
Okay.
But Section 8's a duplicate of itself. Page 13 had a shore land paragraph that was in there. But then after that, like I said, it's mostly just definitions of what the districts are, definitions of boundaries, and then it gets into the charts, which we went over last meeting.
You guys went over the charts at the last meeting?
We did, at the last workshop.
And did you find some issues there? I think there was.
Yeah, yeah, we did.
Okay, alright.
Yeah. But like I said, from a content standpoint, not a lot.
Sorry.
Not a lot of issues.
Okay.
Just because it's all definitions, right? It's not a...
Harvey, actually, we closed the hasty road. One of the tailors threw a tantrum in the office one day.
Well...
Anyway, I'm here.
Good.
My head's on fire, but I'm here. I made a halfway hasty road before I turned around and got yelled at because I turned around in someone's driveway.
Oh, wow.
Have we gotten to my section yet?
No.
No.
We just finished in Aaron's.
Yeah, so content-wise, there's not a lot to change. It's definitional. I didn't see anything that, you know, stuck out to me as needing an update or anything like that.
Okay. I'm sure there's some other things that we'll have to, once we start discussing this among ourselves, each area, we'll probably run into some other things and have some other questions. And then Saban, Beck, we've had pages 21 through 45. Saban?
Yes. So mine is mostly the mixed use of charts, whatever you consider charts and tables. There's a lot of things that could be more solidified.
Okay.
And standardized, make it easier to read.
Okay.
I had a couple of questions, like who defines what types of vegetation? Because I was not listening to the book, so if somebody was to look at the book, they might come to us before, or do something before they come to us. There's a bunch of things where we refer to, and I don't, to be politically correct, there's a bunch of things referring to like, if a developer does this, he should do that. We should change that to me.
Do I?
And then I have sections that should be moved, entire sections to the shore land that we want to develop.
Right.
Several areas, not including the whole area that said shore land. And I'm pretty positive, when I first read through this, that it said if you were going to be constructing a new street, you had to go to the selectmen. And then another area, when I read it again, it said that you had to go to the code enforcement officer in the planning board before, and then they report to the selectmen. Now, I couldn't find that exact space. I tried to before I left. I will read it again.
Okay.
But there's my typed notes.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Tightened notes, well, you got a lot of them.
It's just two pages.
Just two pages?
And mostly repetitive.
Yeah.
Like I said, I think content-wise, it's fairly straightforward.
Yeah.
Mostly men aren't going to understand half of this driveway construction.
Right.
And grading, but that's what we're here for.
Well, you were in a section that we're going to have to review for one of our other applications that we still have under review.
Yes.
And it's quite, it's really good. I think it brings up a lot.
There's a lot of questions there.
Yeah. But in order to help clarify some of it, and I was telling the board before you got here, I have a copy of the State Department of Environmental Protection Shoreland and Municipal Shoreland Zoning Ordinance.
Okay.
It's called Chapter 1000. It's about ninety-some pages long, and it's pretty in-depth. So it will help us probably come up with some solutions by referring to the DEP's Chapter 1000 on many of our questions.
I think every book, I think when we finish this book.
Yeah.
It should have a map with a shore land area blacked out so they know they're in that right book. And the shore land book should have an area with everything blacked out except shore land.
Right. Which I'll say, right now, in reality, we have two books.
Correct.
We have a subdivision book. This is our basic book.
Yep.
And we should have a third book when we're all done, that's going to say Shoreland, Shoreland Land and Ordinance Guide Book, with nothing but shore land in it.
Agreed. And my section didn't have a ton that directly referred to shore land.
Right.
Until the very last speech.
Well, mine did. I guess I'm next, and I didn't make any notes, because I was, I was waiting to get this to help me go through this shore land, and now that I have it, that I brought up already, because the way this cover letter reads from the Chapter 1000 Guidelines for Municipal Shoreland Zoning ordinances, it's, it's telling us, the cover letter tells us, I'm going to read a little short paragraph there to the board. When a municipality determines a special local conditions within portions of the shore land zone require a different set of standards from those in the minimum guidelines, must meet their minimum guidelines, the municipality shall document the special condition and submit them together with its proposed ordinance provisions to the commissioner of the department, which is the Department of Environmental Protection, for review and approval. Anything that we do in shore land, if it's different than what's in here, they have to approve it. We just can't, yes?
That's been done.
No, if we change it again.
If we change it again, it has to be...
Yes, yes, they have to redo it and do it again. That's what I'm saying. That's what we're going through now. If we change anything that's outside these guidelines, then we have to submit to DEP again.
Right.
And no amendment to an ordinance, let's see, no amendment to an ordinance which affects shore land zone is valid without the approval of the commission. So if we do anything outside these guidelines, and I'm going to try to have Desiree give everybody a copy of these on the board, so if you guys are looking over into shore land too, other than the, than me doing it, it's going to help you, I think, quite a bit because this is quite lengthy and it's really in-depth, because it refers to a lot of different ordinances. It refers to a lot of different departments, and it...
Very helpful.
It's very helpful to help us achieve the goal that we're trying to do, just in that one area. And it's, how many pages? Chapters, is it? It's quite... Okay. By the way, I won't go through too much of that, because that really gets in-depth. The board assigned to me pages 46 through 79. For some reason, I got the most pages assigned to me.
You weren't here. You weren't here to play there.
That wasn't fair, I don't think, so I got to remember that one.
Okay. I'm good, because I thought I was supposed to do that, so.
But I wanted to go, give you an idea of some of the things that I've looked at, because I have a, I want to bring something up, give you an idea of what's, kind of, the way this is written. I got to find that one, one paragraph again in here, and I'll refer to the page so everybody can find it. What were we reading the other day? This really bothered me a lot. Okay. Let's go to page 47, which is the second page of what I'm responsible for. Go to page 47. It's under Section C, 3I, B, parentheses, B. Now, let's go through that one, just this one paragraph, and you guys, when you read this, see if you ran into the same issues that I ran into when I read this. For structures, it just talks about structures in general. It's not defining other than the primary structure. Located less than 100 feet from the normal hall water line of a great pond classified as GPA, or a river, or a river flowing to a great pond classified as GPA, the minimum combined total footprint for all structure, well, that's not it either.
Maximum.
No, that's not the one I, we're just, I'm trying to, it has to do with setbacks from the high water line. I got to find that again.
It says high normal, it says normal, high water line.
Yeah, but it's talking about...
Is it A?
No, I'm not, I'm not looking for totals, a square footage of the footer.
This one here, maybe? I, portion of structure 25.
No, I'm not talking about any standards. I'm talking about what I was reading, had to do where you can move that structure. Jesse, did you, did you find anything?
I marked the page, but I'll find it for you.
I can't believe that I can't find it, because I was just looking at this the other day, and it really, it really caught my attention. Where did I look to find that?
Relocation, Section C. Reconstruction or replacement?
No, either. A non-conforming structure may be relocated within the boundaries.
No, that's not, that's what it says. No, I had to, roadways are nothing like that either. Resource Protection District. I can't find it now. For what? I should have marked it.
I should have too.
Huh?
I should have marked it too.
Tree removal, vegetation, no, it had nothing to do with that.
How about a non-conforming structure which is located in less than required setback to the water body, tributary stream or wetland, and which is removed by 50% or less than would market value?
No.
Or damage is destroyed, may be reconstructed.
Had nothing to do with square footage, nothing at all. Percent increase or anything? Huh?
This is talking about...
Reconstruction.
Damage or destroyed.
No.
Can be moved.
No. This had to do with two different setbacks based on the high water line and the value or type of flow or the river itself, or water itself. The water, that's what I'm trying to think of. Had nothing to do with floodplains either. I can't believe it, I can't find, and I was just sitting and studying that, because it really threw me for a loop when I was looking at it. Had nothing to do with water piers or docks or anything like that. Because those, nothing to do with new roads and driveways or parking areas.
Boy, that's not...
Huh?
I just thought, I just thought that was part of the context, kind of contradictory to what we were being the other day.
I can't believe that. Ah ha! Let's go to page 71.
We were that far, huh?
Yeah, I was that far. Page 71. I just had to keep going. It's Paragraph C on page 71. This here, if you listen, think about English and the structure of a sentence when you read this. At distances greater than 100 feet horizontal distance from a great pond classified GPA or a river flowing to a great pond classified GPA, and 75 feet horizontal distance from the high water line of any other, oh, okay, that's, that's right there. A distance greater than 100 feet from horizontal distance from a great pond classified a GPA or a river flowing to a great pond GPA. Then they put a conjunction in here, and then they said and, and 75 feet horizontal distance from the normal hall water line of any other water, of any other water body. Wow.
Could be a puddle.
It could be a puddle. It could be a river. That could be like the river out here, what, what's the name of our river?
Osme.
The Osme River. It could refer to that river out here, because it don't dump into a great, it does not dump into a great pond area. Tributary horizontal from high water line to other body, tributary system, or the open edge of wetland, there shall be allowed any lot in any ten, 10-year period. So what they're saying, if you have a stream or a body of water that flows into a great pond, the structure you have there has to be set back at least 100 feet. Well, that's not the end of that sentence. When you look at the conjunction, it says and, and 75 feet horizontal distance from the normal hall water line of any other body, of any other water body.
But this has to do with cutting.
Huh?
This doesn't have to do with structure.
Yeah, it had to do with structure.
No, this is about clearing wood.
This is about cutting wood. There's nothing to do with...
There's another one then, someplace it had to do with structures.
Yeah.
I can't find, I still can't believe I can't find that.
It's here.
It's in here, because I read it and I showed it to the CEO, and he read it, and he just shook his head.
Yeah, it's almost the same, it says the same thing.
Right, right. It's, we're talking about a structure, and that's what blew my mind.
Well, later on, the next sentence says, in no event shall clear openings for any purpose included but not limited to principal accessory structures.
Right.
So you can't clear land in that area for...
For another structure.
For a structure.
Right. But that's wasn't what I was referring to when I was reading this. It just, the way it was written, because it was also a compound sentence, structure. It had a conjunction in there, and it should have been separate, should have been...
Principal and accessory structures.
Yeah, yeah, that's, yeah, you're right. Now then, I just got to find that, where is that paragraph? There it is.
A.
A, 2A. That's right, that's it. All new principal and accessory structures is any other than the primary building. Let's say you got a shed on there, you got a porch on there, not a porch, but a outhouse, shall be set back at least 100 feet horizontal distance from the normal hall water line of great ponds classified GPA and rivers that flow to great ponds GPA. Now, rivers, they all, it's about, it's a GPA, it's a great pond or a river that flows to it. Then you've got a comma and a conjunction here, and it says and 75 feet horizontal distance from normal hall water line of other water bodies, tributary streams, or the up, upland edge of a wetland. What are the, what I was thinking, well, what is water bodies? What are they talking about? That's confusing to me, because it's a compound sentence, that should have been two separate sentences, and it should not be written like that, and we got to define, what is the other water bodies? Could it be the river? Because it don't flow into a, a great pond.
Or a stream or...
It could be a stream that flows into the river, because they still continue to move on out. They flow into the ocean. They don't flow into a great pond.
So in the definition section, the stream is identified as a body of water.
Right. And so would a river. But it don't tell me they're a river. It don't, I looked like you did. I found the stream, but I didn't find nothing about a river. Great docks, right. Horizontal distance from normal hall water line of other water bodies, tributary streams, this here, it didn't mention streams, or the upland edge of a wetland that does not flow into a great pond. And it gives another exception here too. So this, this, when we get into this part of shore land, I'm telling you guys, it's going to take some time to really look at this and see what these people have, they've combined it, threw everything together, and it's got to be brought out and separated out into individual pieces.
Right.
And it's going to take a while on this shore land. The rest of the book may be simple and easy, but when we get into shore land, and I hope everybody's willing to help me on this, it's going to take a lot of effort, especially when I look at it from a English point of view. That's what I like to specialize in.
Well, it's funny about the areas where they've broken things out.
Oh, yeah, they did that.
Yeah.
And it's just not, no. So I was just thinking, if...
It's like a water body, because I don't see any issue with that sentence.
Yeah, it's still got to be separated out. There's nothing, it should be separate by itself, 75 feet is referring to, anything in there that's 75 feet should be a separate sentence, separate from the 100 feet. That's what I think.
Something else that adds to it, if you wanted to turn to page 111.
Why don't I want to do that?
Because there's, there's more to it.
Yeah.
Right. All structures except functionally water-dependent structures are set back from the normal high water line of a water body, tributary stream, or upland edge of a wetland is rated back to extent, but not less than 75 feet.
Right. It just gives you options to set it back at least 75 feet, no less than, but it could be...
Doesn't specify in this part of it whether it's a GPA or a great pond, or doesn't specify.
Well, then this one would have precedence because it specifies.
Yeah.
It's more detailed. This paragraph is more detailed.
Right.
And it would override that one, because that one would be too general.
Right. What I'm pointing out is it's just spotty all through the book.
Yeah.
It depends on what, when you read it.
Yeah. It's, it's going to take some effort. This can't be done, it just like, not overnight. It's going to take us months to get through all of this. But I just want, I wanted to point out to you, just that one area, and there's a lot more in here, and especially after I got the Chapter 1000 from the DEP. So what I was thinking about is, let's say you have a, you have a, not a toilet, what they, outhouse.
outhouse.
You have an outhouse that sits on a piece of property that is not backed up to a great pond, and it's less than 100 feet, but it's near a river. Does it have to be 100 feet, or is it 75 feet? The way I read this, and I hope you guys, see what you guys think, I can have that outhouse set at 75 feet, 75 feet back from the high point, high water line, because it doesn't dump into a great pond. It has nothing to do with a great pond. Anybody got a different thought about that? What do you guys think?
I agree. This one I read.
Okay.
About the depth of the outhouse.
Huh? What's that?
How deep is it?
But the only thing that I have about that outhouse is, it's contaminating the water, because whatever you dump in that outhouse in the ground stays there. It does, nobody pumps outhouses, they just cover them over, and whatever comes out of the body, which could be heavy metals, you can have heavy metals in your body, and you could have other type of affluence that are derogatory to safe water.
Bacteria.
Huh?
Bacteria.
Yeah, all bacteria, and also any other thing, viruses. Yeah, viruses and everything else. But what I'm saying is, if someone wanted to move a, or have an outhouse, and it's not in relation to a great pond or GPA, it doesn't back up to a GPA, a great pond, and it's only, has to do with a river, then it could be at 75 feet from the high water line. Does anybody else see anything different than that? Opinions?
I think it's...
Aaron, opinion.
That's what it said.
Okay. Roger, opinion.
That's what it reads.
We all read?
Yeah.
So that's when I, that's one thing I'm going to work on. And there's more, there's more like that in this, in this part of the book. It's just loaded with issues. So if you get your section done pretty simple and easy, I think the shore land by itself is probably going to take us six to eight months, just for the shore land.
I would infer.
And I want to hear, and I want to hear from the CEO as we're going through it, that's why it's nice that he's here tonight, because he's the code enforcement officer. He's been in the township quite a while, so we need to hear, see what his opinions are, not just ours, and he can help us there too. Desiree, you have, Desiree works in Sevago, so I'm sure she hears some things from Sevago's point of view also, that you may be able to bring to the table and enlighten us a little bit. Okay? So with that being said, guys, you may give me the most pages, but you sure give me the most work.
Actually, he just went and hold up. How we sit at the table.
I'm just...
I know.
All right.
Now, how are you going to write this all down? You going to get notes?
Yes, we're going to have notes and everything. We've already, they've already brought some notes in, and I wanted, I didn't write any notes yet, because when I started reading it, I wanted to wait till I talked to the board and start to get a feel for how they're thinking too, so I can bring all my notes forward to all. Everybody, for each section's going to have notes. Then we're going to compile all the notes for each one of us, and we'll go through all the sections together with the notes.
Well, I guess my question is, obviously Desiree doesn't have enough time to type all this stuff down.
We have to bring our own notes.
Is there a Microsoft Word version of this?
There is, yeah.
Will you email it to me?
Yeah, so, it's ready, that I've already started working on the formatting, trying to shift over, try to bring it in line like we talked about at the work, last workshop. So, and it turned out to change this, so I'm hoping that everything, you know, I can get it to you, you know, just track everything, because what we'll need to do is we'll need to submit the document with all the changes, you know, the strike throughs and everything. We're going to need to submit that to the selectmen to go before the town to be voted on.
It can't be voted on if we do something dramatic that conflicts with the DEP. It would have to go to them first.
No, it has to be from by the town and then submitted to the DEP. I just went through this in Sevago, Alan.
Okay.
So, because the town has...
Even though they approve it, the DEP might not approve it.
Which is, which is fine. Which is fine, then we're back, we're back to drawing board.
Yeah, back to square one.
Yeah.
Well, my point is, if you need somebody to handle the planning, you can hire somebody to do that, have them come in and...
I want the money.
She's all set, sounds like.
No, I...
She's part of the A-Rat plan, dude.
Yeah.
She could shake off the whole...
If we get locked down and we need help, I'll let you do it.
So when you put this in the Word program, we can go into the document where we want to change things, take out some words, and then put in, just like you did on your application.
Yeah, so we do strike throughs.
Strike throughs.
And, and put in the comment section what we want to change. And, and put in the comment section what we want to change.
The shorelands or whatever.
Yeah.
Right, right. We'll track, track everything. That way, even though we're gonna take out the shoreland, the land ordinance that we gave to them is just gonna have a bunch of strike throughs where the shoreline was.
Are you gonna just cut, paste, and insert a shorelands book that way?
I don't know. Um, the only reason I don't know is because some of the formatting is just so crazy that it might just be easier to, uh, you know, type myself, so...
Type the whole book?
Well, not the whole book, but just sections. You know, if I, I'll copy paste as much as I can, but if there are certain sections that I can't copy the formatting, I'll just retype it.
Okay.
I type really fast.
Like the chart, slash tables, slash charts.
Yeah, yeah, so the tables, it'll be easier to throw into Excel, make sure it's all lined up, and then copy it into the Word.
Right. All right. Because in our, in our ordinance book, in this book, we need to have something in here, just maybe a sentence or a short paragraph depicting that the shoreland has been taken out of this book and putting into its own doc, on its own book, and that's all we need in this document, in this book here.
Yeah.
That's all. It should be totally taken out of here, other than just...
So you just replace the sentence that already exists?
Yeah, right.
Right, so, so like, for instance, Article One, Section Ten E is, Shoreland District Amendment submitted to the DEP. Strike through that, and it'll put something atop, anything referring to shoreline has been moved to the shoreline zone.
Shoreland and zoning, uh, uh, book, uh, how they call this here?
Shoreland zoning ordinance.
Ordinance, yes.
Yeah.
It'd be cover something just like it discovered, yes?
So, um, I just went through the whole land use thing with Cornish, and it took us almost three years, and we had Southern Maine Planning doing most of the work for us.
Just for shoreland?
To take the shoreline out of the book and to review and update the whole land use ordinance in the shoreline zone. And like I said, that was them doing it. It's been denied once by the town, and it's going back for a vote in March, at the end of the month. So, just be prepared that this, you know, you say six to eight months, it might...
Might be quite more than that. But we're pretty aggressive since, uh, you know, especially if we get a copy of one that's just been redone.
Brownfield.
Who?
Brownfield.
Brownfield just did theirs? Is theirs approved?
Yeah.
Was the, did DEP approve theirs?
Yeah, they did, yeah.
Oh, okay. See, that's the big thing, if DEP's approved it...
The Cornish ordinance is very similar to Parsons Field's.
Cornish, yeah, they just got redone.
Yeah, so the, the Cornish and the Parsons Field ordinances are almost exactly the same. Like, almost hered them. So, it might be as simple as we stealing their document. It'd be easier to say, could we just substitute Parsons Field for Cornish?
Well, it might be a little more than that, because when I read these...
Look, look, they did a copy of their, their shore.
What's that?
We can get a copy of their shoreline zoning ordinance and compare.
Who's that, Cornish?
Cornish.
Yeah. When I read these, some of these paragraphs, they are gonna have to be redone. I mean, re, it's gonna take some time. Just that one we just talked about. You see what that discussion was?
Mm-hmm.
Just one paragraph.
And you haven't even got to Roger yet.
I haven't got to Roger yet. And I haven't got to Andy yet. So it's gonna be, uh, quite lengthy to do this and do it appropriately and, uh, and right, so it don't, the township doesn't have a problem down the road after we're not on the board anymore, you know? So they'll have a good document to work from. Wait a minute, I got four more years plus the one I'm doing now. That's, gives me a total five, and we'll see. Uh, I'd give them a good document to, to, to work from for the next planning board of members, whoever they may be. But, uh, guys, uh, just look at it at detail, and once you get that to us, that Word program, that Word document, then so we can make the changes that we're looking at. I can go through then and look and read and have the Word document on my computer and make the changes as I'm going through them on this big...
Just make sure you don't delete anything, just...
Strike it.
Strike through and track your changes and, you know, make comments in the, in the track changes section.
Right.
I mean, I think we should keep, you know, I'm doing this exact program, or this exact same thing at work right now, so, and, you know, there shouldn't be one copy that gets sent from one to one to one and sent over, and changes made and things like that. Um, there should be one central document, and rather than make changes, make comments so that we can discuss those changes.
Notes.
Right. Yeah. You can insert comment instead of make the change, because like, that sentence that you're talking about, I have absolutely no problem with that sentence. That sentence is very well-written.
No, it's not.
Well, again, it's, it's, I, I don't know how you're reading it, but it, the way it reads is...
I read it as a compound sentence that should be a single point of thought, not two points of thoughts.
There's probably too many commas in there, but that's the only, like, from a sentence standpoint, it's saying, "All new principal and accessory structures shall be set back at least one hundred feet," and then it gives the criteria that that applies to, "and seventy-five feet," and then gives the criteria that that applies to. That's what I'm saying, like, I don't, there's no problem with how that, how that reads, like I said, I, I mean, you know, you could probably take out the commas after around horizontal distance, but other than that...
Yeah. But you're gonna have people that read it and read it and look to pick it apart, and I wanna make sure, if we can, if possible, have sentences that people just can't pick apart and just say, you know, uh, I think Harvey knows what I'm talking about, there are people out there that we have some time visiting and asking questions, and they pick apart.
Right, but if this, if you're changing more...
Right.
You're inviting questions. If you're saying, if you don't, if you don't change that sentence, it's already approved. It's already approved piece. You know what I mean? That's what I'm saying. So I think, you know, that's probably way too in the weeds for meeting, you know, one of...
Right.
You know, but...
I wouldn't have brought it up so everybody could talk about it.
Oh, I, I get it, but I think that that's, you know, I, I think that what we should be looking for more is things that, like the other piece that you brought up where it doesn't call out the GPA later on on page, whatever it was, seventy, whatever.
Seventy, yeah.
Um, things like that are gonna be more important than...
Right. We're all gonna work on it from a point of view, our own point of view, and then we hopefully, can we, when we do this, this, uh, Word program, can we submit it back to you so you can make it one document?
So...
That's what I think Aaron's asking.
So you have a couple options, you can go down through the five of you, give it to Aaron first, let him do his stuff, send it back, give it to Saban, let him do his stuff, and so on, or you can all five do all your changes and update, do everything.
Consolidate it?
Right. So it's, that's up to you guys on how you'd rather do it. I mean, it, personally, I think it would streamline better if you hand it one at a time. That way, everybody sees what the previous person has done. You know, Saban will see what Aaron's tried to pull out, change, and so on, instead of just free, free-for-all kind of?
No, it's not a free-for-all.
Well, no, but...
And it can be discussed before the next person takes a turn or something?
Right, yeah, you know, let Aaron, you know, so we have a workshop...
On Eric.
Probably gonna have one once a month. So between now and April, Aaron would make all his changes and update from his section.
And we discuss it all.
And then April, we pull it out, discuss it, hand it off to Saban. That way, you're not trying to do it all at once.
And nobody's walking on each other.
It's ultimately up to you guys, so you, you guys get to decide, I'm just throwing out ideas there.
I mean, we know it's gonna take forever anyways.
Yeah, it is.
This way, we get to discuss each thing as it gets brought up.
I don't, any ways that we get it done is okay with me. Any way we can get it done is just fine. I just wanna make sure when we're done, it's, it's done, it's finished, before we ever decide to give it to the ordinance selectmen to approve it, then take it to, I guess, town meeting? Because the town meeting, the town people are the ones that approved the document itself, all the language.
So you have till September of any year to, or not September, let's say?
It might not be...
July, July, take it July of any year to have a, a document together so that the public can review it and ask any questions they might have, and, you know, maybe catch something that we did, some careful error.
Yeah. Well, it might not be ready for this year, that's for sure. I wouldn't expect it to be. Can you, uh, obtain that document you just brought up? Can you obtain a copy of that? You guys from Cornish? You do?
I'm the secretary still.
That's right, you're still...
For a little bit longer.
For a little bit longer. And theirs is approved?
No, theirs is go, so theirs, they have Southern Maine Planning and Development Commission overhaul it.
Okay.
That draft is going to be for the town on the twenty-first.
Okay.
And to, to be approved. Last year, they did the same thing, nobody wanted to approve it then. Hopefully, the twenty-first will be able to approve it.
Okay.
But I do have the draft document that is going to be...
Mr. CEO, who just got theirs approved? Who'd you say that was?
Brownfield.
Brownfield? Do you talk to them?
I do.
Would you ask them if we may be able to obtain a copy of theirs?
I've got a copy of it.
Oh, you do?
I do.
The current one that's, that's new and approved?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll work it in.
Okay. That's Harvey.
If you need assistance from SMPC, we can have somebody come in and talk to you guys if you wish. Three of you right now are on the comprehensive plan, you may be able to hit that at the same time, because this, this should all come together, that's what we're hoping for. Because if we go to a special town meeting, we can be open.
That's another thing that I brought up, board. I was talking to, I was talking to Harvey about this, and you all know we're on the comprehensive plan, we're redoing the comprehensive plan. What if we get our, now this is just a what if, what if we get our plan for land use ordinance redone before the comprehensive plan is ever finished? And we already have ours done and submitted for review, and all of a sudden, when the comprehensive plan gets done, we still got conflicts. We're supposed to kind of fall in line with what's put in the overall comprehensive plan. It's supposed to be not match, but be somewhat...
So...
That's what my, that's, I brought that up to Mr. Harvey, and I said, "I got an issue that, that bothers me."
So what I would say to that is, make all your changes, and then before you submit the land use ordinances to the town for approval, and you know that the comp plan is done, give land use ordinance to Southern Maine Planning and have, um, double-check it. You know, because that way, most of the light works done, and all they're gonna have to do is tweak, you know, a small handful of things instead of the whole...
That's where I think we can use the Southern, use them, when we have both plans, to do their overall review, to see if they match up and we don't have any issues.
Well, in my, uh, view, the comprehensive plan is more of a sales tool for the town.
It's more of a what?
Sales tool. No, it's, it has all the information pertinent to transportation, all this other stuff.
Yes.
The last paragraph, or the last, um, chapter would be to overhaul or look at the ordinances. In my estimation, be a generalization of what you already have.
Right.
That's my view of it.
And we've had people say to us before, and I remember these conversations, "Well, our ordinance does not match with the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan takes precedence, and we gotta change our plan so it's more in line with the comprehensive plan."
Well, that's because those people didn't have any power to do anything else.
Yeah.
Where, but that's no longer, hopefully, the...
That's, that's true, but I, I would hate to us to do all that work, and then there'd be some issues between the two plans. I wouldn't want that to happen.
Well, that's up to us to straighten that out.
Yeah.
If we can get that under control.
Because if we use Southern Maine, not use them while we're doing it, but use them when we're all done with our recommendations, to see how far along the comprehensive plan is, and have them review the two plans and see if they're coherent with each other. That's what I thought. We could use them at that time. That's, that's what they get paid, they would be good at that.
Yeah. Well, they will be able to help us...
Yeah.
With coming up with something that is in line with other towns around here, because we have a special situation here, we're not Saco or...
No.
Benifer or anything like that. So I think the generalization at, at the last chapter would be, our shoreline, you know, ordinances have been upgraded to, if you wanna know more about that, go to, go to the shoreline ordinance book.
Right. Once it's approved by the township...
Right.
Okay.
I mean, that's what I look at now, I don't want to run down...
Aaron, Saban? Hey, just make comments. Don't let me do all the talking.
Oh, I mean, I, I think that's, you know, what, eight months from now, ten months from now, or longer, a year from now?
Yeah.
You know, I think, I think, I think we gotta get, run through, run through all our sections.
Mm-hmm.
Get everybody, you know, everybody here for these, so that it's not just, you know, so that the whole board's making the decisions.
Yes.
Having the conversations, um, but, yeah, I think, I think we start worrying about, you know, we're putting the ball in the ground on the first tee and worrying about the second shot on the eighteen hole, you know?
That's gonna take a while.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's gonna take us a while to get to the eighteen hole, it's gonna be, it's a long course.
Yeah. Yeah, it's definitely, uh, definitely gonna be, you know, a, not a quick and easy solution, so...
No. No, it's not, because also, when I was just thinking about back, I'm thinking to myself, the way we did an application recently, that we had a lot of problems with, remember the application? We had lots of problems, many, many meetings, many meetings. And some of the things that we used, it's in the part of the book that you're in, to approve that application, somebody is saying, "That's wrong, you can't do that." You gotta go back to the other part about a subdivision development and use their definition of, of dimensions, but that's in a new subdivision for new roads. It didn't talk about any things existing like a private road.
Right.
So we, yes...
Confusing.
It's, it's confusing in, from that point of view, too.
Well, I think that's what the benefit of going through it is, is looking for those opportunities. I think that's what the benefit is, you know, switching up and looking at, each of us looking at a different section, and...
Right.
And honestly, I think that, you know, we should, you know, it's gonna take five meetings just to get through each of, you know, for us to rotate, for each of us to get, uh, the section. So I think that...
It's gonna take longer than I want.[1688.54]
Well, but...
I'm the slow reader.
But then...
We had a feeling.
Then again, you know, there's the, the, the argument that most of that is shoreline. Should we just pull that out and not worry about it? You know, should we focus on the ordinance and separating the shoreline and as its own, you know, as its own beast?
Well, that isn't real. That's what we're, that's what we're trying to do.
But that's what I'm saying, like, so if we're going through it, let's pull out, you know, first run through, we pull out all the shoreline, put it in its own document. So, now we have two documents, like, we're going to have, and now let's get the ordinances in line, and then we'll get the shoreline in line. So, it'll make it a lot easier, because, you know, shoreline is almost half of the book.
Mm-hmm.
So, I think that'll certainly make it a lot easier.
Yeah, it's not gonna be easier. It's, I'm trying, anyway, to make it easier, which I'm all for.
Yeah.
I'm all for that.
I think, I just don't want us to get bogged down in two focuses, right? So, if we focus on ordinances now, we can get that piece done. That's all set. Now, we can fo- switch focus over to shoreline, because the ordinance piece is less of a, you know, it's not, it's, you're pulling out pieces. There's not gonna be significant changes, right? There's not gonna be, you know, like there will be with creating a net new document in the shoreline piece.
Right.
You know, we're gonna have to look at that hundred-page document, see what's in there. There's gonna be pieces in our book that we can remove, because it matches up with that.
And insert this, yeah.
Exactly.
That's what I planned on doing.
So, I think that taking the, you know, the, the low-hanging fruit of just pulling that out and not worrying about it right now will probably save us a lot of time and headache in the near term.
Yeah, I just, I just hope that we can all start making the meetings, too, on these workshops, so when we go through this, everybody's sitting here, everybody's making comments, and everybody knows what everyone's thinking on this board. Uh, if we, that's gonna be the hard part, is get everybody here on workshop meetings.
Yeah. I think, um, if we can get a copy of that Word document for this book, I mean, I can certainly take, you know, these page numbers and divide it up and divide each of these into a Word document, and that way, we can just combine it at the end with all the comments, so that way, we're not going through it. I can go through it. When I'm done, I send it over to Saban. When Saban's done, he sends it over to you. You're done, you send it to Andy, and he's done, sends it to Roger. Roger sends his back to me. That way, we've got, each got our own five, you know, five files. We'll go ahead and we'll make our comments, we'll see the, you know, and then, once we've done all that, then we can sit and have a conversation and say, "All right, you know, here's the combined file that all five of us have looked at."
Right.
Now...
See if we agree with it all.
Right, yeah, and just see where we all stand, you know, and there's gonna be pieces like that sentence where, you know, we aren't gonna agree.
Agree to disagree, yeah.
Right, you know, that, that...
That's what's gonna make it better.
Right. Yeah. So, I think that, I think that's, you know, next steps, you know, that we're gonna wanna look forward to, is getting that, that digital document and jumping in and...
Well, we gotta get our executive secretary in gear then.
She's in, she's always in gear from where I'm at.
No, I don't know about that.
No, she's always five steps ahead of us.
Drinking Dr. Pepper. She's gonna be a hall of fame.
Oh, goodness.
Okay, so you have that one document from one township, Desiray, and you have, and you have another document, CEO, from another township. It's approved.
So, I take back what I said about Cornish making the shoreline zoning its own book. It's a separate chapter in their ordinance.
Which is...
So, it's, it's still, it's removed from the rest of the ordinances, so it's by itself, but it's not a separate book.
That's...
But they have a lot of...
Basically the same thing.
That's the same thing?
They have the water that we have.
Huh?
They don't have the water there that we have here.
Here, right. What about Brownfield?
Brownfield does.
Okay.
And, um...
Can you get us a copy of that one?
Yeah, yeah.
Or make sure we all, can you get copies from all the boards?
I can bring in a copy to, to the copyer.
Um, just get it as a, get it as a...
And give it to Desiray, and she'll make copies for us. Absolutely.
So, it's what it is, then we'll have a document that's been recently approved by the DEP, which would be nice to have that, too.
As you said, a lot of the labor works have already been done.
Yeah, the labor would be done, basically.
Yeah, we can use it as a reference point.
Yeah, a good reference point, yeah, along with this, when you start reading this, guys, I'm telling you, it's...
Do you have your any download copy of that? You just printed it?
I had it printed in the office. Here. Desiray?
Yeah.
Can you download Department of Environmental Protection, Chapter One Thousand?
I'm sorry, to drop? Oh, no, you were gonna send it to her.
I'm gonna send it to her.
You're gonna send it to her in PDF, so she can send it to every board member?
Yeah.
And they all have a copy of this. I have a hard copy, that's...
I'm, I'm gonna attach, um, Sadego's shoreline zoning ordinance, because we have a separate book, too, but we have the lake, so it's, you know, we do have a lot of water.
You have Monster Lake.
Huh?
You have a Monster Lake.
Yeah, it's tiny.
Second largest state.
Huh?
Second largest state.
Well, we, we do have a lot of small ponds and lakes in the area, too, so...
Okay. What is the largest? Who said?
Who said?
That's right, okay. Now then, let's get over, Andy Yell's not here. Let's get to the last individual, Roger, and he's at Pages One O Five. He got many to One Eight.
It's basically all definitions of what Mr. CEO gets to tell everybody what to do.
Have you, Andy, any problems with any of it?
I really haven't. I mean, there's a, there's a few spots that probably he wants to pull himself from. Where it puts him, like, where we can put him on the chopping block.
Yeah, okay.
But other than that, it's just basically the rules and regulations and penalties of if you misbehave and what he can do to come down on you, and... But that was about it.
I give my policeman to the south.
Yeah, yeah, starts hollering and screeching, but, I mean, I'll, I'll go through it some more, too, but...
Okay.
I read through it fast, and I gotta read things two or three times for it actually sticks.
Well, I, I try to read fast. I'm a fast reader a lot most of the time, but when I run into an issue, the brakes go on.
Yeah.
I read over, I read over, I read it over, and over again. I try to analyze it to a point that it may be over-analyzed.
Right, so I did a few things.
Let me ask the board, in your opinions, your opinions on this one, too. From what I'm listening to, what I hear is, we don't have a lot outside of zoning that's gonna take a lot, a whole lot of work, lots of work, let's put it that way. Most of the rest of them might be simplified and easier to do. Is that...
Worked differently, so...
Is that, uh...
I said shoreline, didn't you?
Yeah, shoreline. Shoreland's gonna be the one that's gonna cost us time, more time.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I think, I think there'll, you know, there'll be some things here or there that we'll need to get together on, but, you know, I don't think that the, it's... Outside of the formatting issues, I don't think there's a lot of, you know, need for us to make wholesale changes to the ordinance.
Okay. That's what, that was my question.
Yeah.
Okay. So, in fact, the book may be somewhat simpler than what we were, what I was assuming in the beginning, after what you guys gave me, give the input about, other than that one area, other than the shoreline area.
Right. Oh, I think the, definitely the shoreline's gonna be the biggest lift, right, because you're, you're pulling it out, whereas all you have to do in the ordinance is to say, "See shoreline".
Right.
You know, so now you're going to create this new document, which doesn't have the context of the surrounding ordinances.
Right.
So, you're gonna have to create that context.
It's gonna be standalone.
Yeah. So, yeah, that's definitely, it's not, not as simple as a lift and shift, you know, it's not, it's not that, uh...
Right, it's not.
We're not gonna get away with that.
No, no. Well, there's some, there's some lead-in paragraphs and documents out of this Chapter One Thousand that's gonna help us a lot due to shoreline.
Yeah.
The, the front, the front for shoreline, a lot of it's right here in this document, which is gonna make it simpler and easier to do, because the way they put it together. And, but once you guys all get a copy of it through the PDF, you'll be able to see that, too.
I think it'll be helpful to bring, you know, documents up to date.
Yes.
From what, revised September twenty eighteen?
Yeah.
So...
Yeah. Anything else, Roger?
Uh, what I was thinking was, I mean, some of this, just to me, is kind of backwards. I mean, they got site plan reviews. They tell you how to do it in the back of the book, and technically, it's the first thing you wanna be doing in any situation with the planning board and all that stuff. They've got it at the back of the book.
You're talking about the application?
Yeah.
Well, all the, all the forms are in the back of the book.
Right, but I mean, the way they're supposed to use it and this and that, I mean, that's pretty much the first thing they have to do with any project in this town is the application. And they open this book, and they gotta go through fourteen thousand pages to find a damn thing.
Yeah.
There won't be fourteen thousand when we take the shoreline out of there.
Right, right.
It'd be kind of a small book at that time.
Man, there's a lot of stuff I did find. I even read through some of your stuff, too. It was a little repetitive.
Yes.
Too much.
It's too much, too repetitive.
That it just contradicts itself.
So, do my strike-out paragraph, whole paragraph, just strike them out?
Right.
Or it's not needed.
But I did see a lot of that.
Just reaching out there on the eighteenth hole, like, way before it should be, but we should be adding some other ordinances in there about medical marijuana and uses, just like some other opt-out towns have done, and put it right into their ordinances, because I get faced with medical marijuana questions all the time.
Is that in Brownfields?
Cornish.
Cornish, in Cornish's, okay.
Cornish, Cornish has a lot of extra ordinances at the back of their book. Like, adopt control ordinance, gravel extraction, or mineral extraction, sorry, not gravel, mineral extraction.
We have all of them.
So...
Mineral extraction's in our book.
But they have, they have a separate chapter on it.
Oh, wow.
So, that, that's why I say, look, look at the, I gave you the link for Sadego, I gave you the new one for Cornish. You never know, looking at something else's, you might get an idea of, oh, this is, I'd rather just do this.
Right, let's look at that, so it needs a hell of a lot more stuff.
Our book right now is, everything is just so scattered.
Yes.
Where I wanna look up mineral extraction. Well, it could be anywhere in that book. Literally, I could be in the first twenty pages and read about mineral extractions, but then I gotta go to Section Eight to read about...